Welcome back to part three of my Japanese studies. Now, I wish this didn't take, well, like uh, I wish I hadn't taken as long in getting my uh, my videos out, but I've had quite a busy day recently, uh, quite a few busy days. Uh, yesterday I was getting my motorbike license, smashed that, I'm gonna drink to it now, there's the motorbike licenses. Hmm, we are of course drinking ramen, we're back to lychee flavor because lychee flavor is the one. Uh. Hmm. We've got a panda cup. And we have for our support animal, Detective Bumble, and we've got slippers back, found them, although they're on my bed, which is not cool. Don't don't wear slippers in your room, well, I'm on beds, something like that. Um, so, uh, I got myself this really snazzy looking leather jacket as well, hmm, beastly. Anyway, you didn't come here to admire me, you came here to learn a little Japanese, and that is exactly what we're going to do. Uh, and last time in my last video, we ended on masu, um, and we were right at the end of the third chapter. So we are going to be continuing with that, uh, you have to excuse my hair as well, I've just come out of the shower. You're probably thinking, Wayne, why are you wearing your jacket in your room after you've just taken a shower? And that was just because it's a very nice jacket and I pull it off. But I will take it off now. So you can see my very anime- anime-esque t-shirt, sold out online, gotta represent. Although I did kind of bulk up a bit since I bought this shirt, so it is quite small a bit. And you have to excuse the uh, trials and tribulations of me getting this jacket off because I've just come out of the shower, my body is a little harder to get the jacket off of, as it is proper leather and all that. And the other thing, I I wanted to upload a video before then, but I recently just got myself a new tattoo as well. Um, probably can't see that so well, but there you go, there you go. So that's Jeremiah twenty-nine, if you're familiar with Bible extracts, that'll be the one. It's in Latin and in Old English, which absolutely, ugh, amazing. But it took longer than I uh, expected, so that's why I haven't uploaded. I do apologize for that. Anyway, a little less about me, you're here to learn Japanese with me. Um, let's start the Japanese study session, I hope everyone is well, I hope everyone is well, having a good day, I've had a long day. But uh, yeah, let's get to it. So, uh, we're introducing the verb desu to be, so desu to be. Uh, like the English verb to be, desu, uh, expresses the identity or state of people and things. Desu is used in the construction x wa y desu. X wa y desu. X is y. As I note earlier in the chapter, the conventional Japanese order is x and y. Uh, x y is not, not x is y. The particle wa is the topic particle I discussed in the earlier section, telling the topic. That would be one of the other things we talked about, please don't break me nail chat. Uh, desu follows either a noun or an adjective. For example, ototo wa gaku se desu, uh, means my little brother is a student. Ototo wa gaku se desu. My little brother is a student. Watashi wa genki desu desu, um, means I am fine. Watashi wa genki desu means I am fine. They know why many Japanese sentences end in desu. Uh, and like the English verb to be, desu, can always, uh, can also express the location of people and things. For example, John wa Boston desu. Um, John is in Boston. John wa Boston desu. Just be aware that you can also express the location of things, people use the verbs aru and iru. To find out more about aru and iru, see chapter seven, we are gonna be doing that, don't worry. We are gonna be covering everything, we have still got a chunky amount of pages to cover, and this is what we've covered in like two YouTube videos, so we've got plenty, we've got plenty. So I hope you are, you're keen to learn Japanese with me. I hope you're loving the accent and my terrible jokes and whatnot. Hopefully you are. Um, anyway, conjugation wise, desu doesn't look like any other verb, that's because desu didn't start out as a standalone verb. It was the combination of the particle de, the verb aru, to exist, and the polite suffix massu. Table three six, which is on him, um, shows you the patterns of the desu, so that we see the point easily. I use the same noun, gaku se, which is a student. Uh, gaku se, which is a student. Uh, if you want to know how to use desu after an adjective, see the following section. We're gonna be seeing the following section, don't worry. Uh, I'm just gonna be saying it all out loud, um, the pronunciation, um, the English and the Japanese obviously. Just so you know, and uh, as I say, when I wanna watch these videos, when I wanna sleep and um, yeah, I wanna listen to these, listen to my own English accent in my sleep. Um, it's kinda like that scientific technique where uh, they say that if you listen to something in your sleep, you're going to learn it better. Or you're going to pick up my English accent, uh, and in which case. Anyway, gaku se desu is a student. Pronunciation, gaku se desu is a student. Gaku se ja arimasen isn't a student. Gaku se ja arimasen isn't a student. Gaku se dashita uh, gaku se dashita was a student. Um, uh, arewa gaku se desu. I am a student. Of cyber security and Japanese. Uh, gaku se ja arimasen dashita wasn't a student. Gaku se ja arimasen dashita wasn't a student. Uh, in an informal context, you can use the shorter versions of desu. Um, so these are the ones you would use with your family and your friends, don't say this to your boss. Gaku se da is a student. Gaku se janai isn't a student. Uh, gaku se datta was a student. Gaku se ja nakata wasn't a student. Ja, which you see in the negative forms, is the contraction of de wa. Most Japanese use ja in everyday conversation. Uh, but occasionally they use de wa, which sounds a bit more formal, just ready to be, to hear either of them. Talking the talk. Susan asks Ken some questions. Uh, so, Susan, ano atoko no hito wa gaku se desuka? Is that man a student? Ano atoko no hito wa gaku se desuka? Uh, is that man a student? And then Ken says, Ie, gaku se ja arimasen, watashi no karate no sensei desu. No, he's not a student, he is my karate teacher. Wow. Ie, gaku se ja arimasen, watashi no karate no sensei desu. No, he's not a student, he is my karate teacher. Ah, so desuka, chotto kowasou desne? Uh, oh, I see, he looks a little scary. I look scary. I'm very intimidating in person, not that you'd get that from this, with my anime shirt, but I wear leather jacket and look mean. I'm quite well built. I'm six foot one. Intimidating. Ah, so desuka, chotto kowasou desne? Kowasou desne? Oh, I see, he looks a little scary. Words to know, ato- atoko no hito, man. Gaku se, student. Sensei, teacher. Kowasu, kowasou, scary looking. Kowasou! Yeah! That's where I have muscles, there we go. Hmm, as I say, I do go to the gym, I do workout and I do kickboxing, Muay Thai kickboxing, I'm also taking up Krav Maga soon. And kowasu, kowasu, kowasou, scary looking, mostly. As in English, you can place Japanese adjectives either before a noun as a noun modifier, an expensive book for example, or at the end of a sentence, the book is expensive. Believe it or not, all Japanese adjectives end in either i or na when they're placed before a noun. Except some categories or adjectives, namely no adjectives, which I don't cover here because they pattern like nouns. Adjectives that I, that end in i are called i-type adjectives. And those that end in na are called na-type adjectives. I-type adjectives are pure adjectives, but na follows adjectives are a sort of noun followed by na. There's really no clear-cut distinction between the two groups in terms of meaning. For example, takai, a taki, and kokona, uh, both mean expensive. Takai. But one is an i-type adjective and the other is a na-type adjective. Look at some adjectives that modify the noun hon, which is book. Takai hon, or takai hon, takai hon, an expensive book. Omoshiroi hon. Omoshiroi, shiroi? Omoshiroi, i? Omoshiroi, uh, omoshiroi hon, an interesting book. Kokona hon, a high-priced book. Uh, benri na hon, a useful book. Benri na hon, this is a useful book. Kiré na hon, a beautiful book, and it is beautiful, we are all beautiful. Well, most of us. Japanese adjectives consist of a stem, that part remains the same. And an inflection, part that changes depending on the context, the endings e and na are inflection parts. English adjectives conjugate based on whether they're comparative or superlative. Uh, like tall, taller and tallest, but Japanese adjectives, uh, conjugate based on different factors. For example, when the adjectives appear at the end of a sentence rather than before a noun, the e and na change or disappear. And an extra argument like the verb desu, to be, shows up in various forms. All of which depend on the tense, the polarity, which is whether the statement is affirmative or negative, positive or negative, uh, or the speech style. Look at the following sentences, all of which either include takai, uh, an i-type adjective, or kokona, a na-type adjective. Arewa kokona arimasen, that isn't high-priced. Arewa kokona arimasen, that isn't high-priced. Hamburger wa takaku arimasen, hamburger's unexpensive. Now, depending on where you go, hamburgers are very expensive. But you do pay for what you get for, like eighty percent of the time, so swings and roundabouts with that one. Uh, then you've got hamburger wa tak- takaku arimasen, which is hamburgers aren't expensive. Kokona nekari ni karu su o kaimashita. Kokona nakarasu o kaimashita, I bought an expensive necklace. Kore wa takakat- uh, takakatu desu. Kore wa takakata desu? That was, this was expensive. This was not expensive, thought you could, bangin'. Takai hon no kaimashita, I bought an expensive book. Takai hon o kaimashita, I bought an expensive book. Uh, this is probably, hmm, I think what the most expensive book I've ever purchased is. What is the most expensive book that you have purchased? Leave that in the comments if you uh, watched this and you find this interesting. Okay, now. Present affirmative, takai kokoda, which is the polarity, so the i version, which is takai, uh, which is present and affirmative, and then you've got kokoda, which is the na type of the same word. Uh, present negative, isn't, uh, takaku nai and kokan janai. Past affirmative, was, takakata and kokodata. Now, past negative for wasn't, takaku nakata, uh, kokja nakata. Present affirmative is, takai desu, kokadasu. Present negative isn't, takaku arimasen, takaku nai desu. Or kokja arimasen, kokjanai desu. Past affirmative was, takakata desu, kokadashita. Past negative wasn't, takaku arimasendashita, dashita, uh, takaku, takaku nakata desu. Uh, kokja arimasendesta or kok- kokja nakata desu. Of course, some Japanese adjectives are irregular. The most frequently used uh, irregular adjective is i, good. Uh, is, its stem part is the initial i and its influence, uh, inf- yeah, inflection part is the second i. The stem part is i becomes yo in all the forms except the present affirmative form. Regardless of whether the adjective appears at the end of the sentence or right before a noun, here are some good examples. I hon desu is a good book. It's a good book, so. I hon desu, it's a good book. She agrees. I desu is good. Yo katta desu, was good. Yo katta desu. Yoku arimasen, arimasen dashita, wasn't good. Yoku arimasen dashita, wasn't good. Yoku arimasen isn't good. Wearing slippers, yoku arimasen, yoku arimasen. Yeah. In this book, when I list an adjective in the words to know section, i list, uh, I list i-type adjectives to na-type adjectives in the form that you see before a noun. Before I put na in the parentheses, when you use a Japanese dictionary, na-type adjectives appear often in their stem form without na. I mean, I always find this light, I mean, it's gorgeous stuff, you absolutely, if you haven't had ramen, you absolutely have to. It's quite gassy, but it's delicious. Yes, quiet, hmm, pip, cheryo. Jeez, bring the scones, what's what, we need them? Anyway, just as adjectives describe how people and things are, adverbs describe how actions are performed. Japanese adverbs fall into two categories, the ones that are created from adjectives and the ones that aren't. I'll tell you about the, about both types of adverbs as well as adverbial clauses in the next sections. Creating adverbs from adjectives. Notice anything special about the words slowly, quickly, pleasantly, neatly, and quietly. They, they're all verbs created from adjectives by adding ly. In Japanese, you can also create adverbs from adjectives, just add ku and ni to the stem uh, of an i-type adjective and na-type adjective respectively. I tell you about the i-type adjectives and na-type adjectives in uh, in the earlier describing people and things with adjective section. So, tanoshi is pleasant and fun, tanoshiku pleasantly. Tanoshi is pleasant and fun. Uh, tanoshiku pleasantly. Shizuku na uh, is quiet. A shizuku ni is quietly. Uh, unlike the adverbs that are created from adjectives, see the preceding section, okay, well, we've got that coming up. Uh, some adverbs are just born as adverbs. For example, chotto, slightly, a little, chotto slightly or a little. Itsumo uh, itsumo, always. Itsumo, always. Mo, already. Mo, already. I'm already a beast. Hmm. Tai taiite usually. Tokidoki, sometimes, now that is a cool one, tokidoki, I like that one. Yukuri slowly, yukuri slowly. The adverb version of i is yoku, well, i is uh, is good. Turning to sentence-like adverbs. You can describe the action or state by using a sentence-like adverb or an adverbial clause to express its circumstances. For example, kara designates reasons for an action, and tokini states the time of an action. Reasons can be stated by a sentence, such as, because I will go to Japan. The time of an action can also be stated by a sentence, such as when I take an exam. Nihon ni ikimasu kara nihongo o benkyo shimasu. Because I'll go to Japan, I'll study Japanese. That's, yeah, that's a good idea. I also need to keep studying, you also need to keep studying and believing. That's what this, this tattoo's about. Believe, hope, stay strong, work hard. Nihon ni ikimasu kara nihongo o benkyo shimasu. Uh, because I go to Japan, I will study Japanese. Nihoga suki desu kara nihongo o benkyo shimasu. Uh, because I like Japan, I'll study Japanese, that's us. Nihoga suki uh, desu kara nihongo o benkyo shimasu. Uh, shiken o ukuru tokini benkyo shimasu, uh, when I sta- when I take an exam, I study. Mm-hmm, we definitely do that. Shiken o ukuru tokini benkyo shimasu. Uh, when I take an exam, I study. Shizuku, shizuka no tokini benkyo shimasu, when it's quiet, I study. Shizuka na tokini benkyo shimasu. These are only a couple of the many kinds of adverbial clauses, but I show you the others throughout the book as they become relevant, so you can get a better idea of how to use them in context. Expressing moods and attitudes. To express your attitude towards your statement, you add some little elements at the end of your sentence, like you'd add right or you know to an English sentence. Here, I've listed the most useful ones, uh, with example sentences, so you'll know how to use them. Okay, so, ne, which is alright, right, isn't it? Uh, ne, which is alright, right, isn't it? Uh, tabemasu ne? Uh, uh, tabemasu ne? I'll eat it all, right? Takai desne? It's expensive, isn't it? Kiré desne? It's pretty, isn't it? Kiré desne? Kiré desne? Hmm? Uh, gaku se desne? He is a student, right? Gaku se desne? Uh, yo, which is, uh, I'll tell you, you know. Uh, tabemasu yo? Tabemasu yo? I'll eat it. Takai desyo? It's expensive. Kiré desyo? It's pretty, I tell you. Gaku se desyo? He is a student, you know. Tabaru desho? He'll probably eat it, so desho is probably. Takai desho? Uh, it's probably expensive, takai desho? Desho? Kiré desho? It's pro- it's probably pretty. Gaku se desho? Is probably a student. Hey, he is probably a student. Uh, kamoshirimasen uh, means may possibly, may or possibly. Tabaru kamoshimasen? Shimasen? Shirimasen, shirimasen, gotcha, he may eat it. Takai ka moshi- shirimasen? It may be expensive. Takai ko, takai ka moshi- masen? Kiré ka moshi- masen? It may be pretty. Kiré ka moshi- masen? It may be pretty. Gaku se ka moshi- masen? He may be a student. Gaku se ka moshi- masen? He may be a student. Okay. We are at the end of chapter three. It only took three YouTube videos to get me there. Uh, these pages aren't even labeled, so I can't even tell you how many pages we've got left, but we are cruising through it. So in chapter four, we are starting with simple expressions. Uh, before we get too far into it, quick pun. Why did, alright, no. Simba was going way too slow, so I had to hand him to Mufasa. I'm here all week. Konnichiwa, good afternoon, hi. Greetings like this one are basic expressions that you can use to kick off conversations with people you know. For those you don't know, you can introduce yourself and find out more about them by engaging in light conversation. This chapter shows you how to form greetings, introductions, and goodbyes in Japanese. It also describes how to interact politely with new people and tell someone thank you or sorry. Beginning and ending conversations. Aid setsi, greetings. Aid setsi uh, are the most important communications tools. Start your day with a friendly and cheerful greeting to your family, friends, colleagues, teachers, bosses, and even strangers on the street. In the following sections, you find out how to greet all kinds of people all throughout the day. And because you inevitably have to say goodbye to that pe- to the people you encountered during your day, you also discover how to do just that. Addressing friends and strangers. In English, you address others by their first names, by their nicknames, and by their positions. Or by their family names and an appropriate title, depending on your relationship and how close you are to that person. You don't want to sound too formal or distant, but you don't want to sound too friendly, presumptuous either. In Japanese society, addressing people is something that you don't want to mess up. When you meet someone new at work and you know the person's occupational title, um, use that title along with his or her family name. For example, sumimasu shachu? President Smith? President Smith is, huh, okay. Sumimasu shachu, shacho? Sumimasu shacho? Following are some examples of occupational char- uh, titles. Uh, bucho? Assistant, uh, division manager even. Bucho, division manager. Uh, gakucho, university present, president. Gakucho, university president. Kocho? Uh, school principal. Kocho, school principal. Sensei, teacher or doctor. Shacho, company president. Uh, tencho, store manager. Tencho, store manager. If you don't know the person's occupational title, the safest way to address him or her is to use their family name, plus the respectable, respectful title. San, uh, sumimasu, sumimasu san? Sumis- sumisu san? Sumisu san? Mister Smith or Missus Smith. Uh, the more polite version of san is sama, but it's too formal and businesslike for most social con- uh, situations. Other respectful titles include chan and kun, but you must use them very carefully uh, to see which titles are appropriate for your friends and acquaintances. The table contains examples of ways to address people. Cool. Uh, so chan is for children used after a boy's or girl's given name. Susan chan. Roberto chan. Kun, used after a boy's given name, also used after a subordinate's family name regardless of gender. Roberto kun. Sumisu kun. sama. Used after a superior's or customer's name regardless of gender, also used when addressing letters. Sumisu sama. Susan sama. Roberto susa sama, susu- sumisu sama. Uh, san, used with anyone if other titles are unavailable. Sumisu san. Susan san. Robaton, Roberto sumisu san, sumisu san. When introducing themselves, Japanese as well as Chinese and Koreans give their family names first and their given names last. Most Japanese realize that Western names aren't in the same order, and they won't expect you to reverse the order of your own name to match the pattern of their names. I mean, many Japanese also realize that Westerners tend to use their given names a lot. But you should use the family name for all but your closest friends and family. If you use the Japanese word for you, anata, you'll sound boastful or rude. Japanese people try not to say anata, instead they just drop pronouns or use names or titles. Uh, if you visit a Japanese store, you'll notice that the rep- store representatives address you as okyaku sama uh, or customer, just because they don't want to say anata instead of you. You can use an interesting age and gender sensitive terms when address in, uh, when addressing strangers in friendly contexts. For example, ogisan literally means uncle, but you can use it to casually address any unfamiliar middle-aged man. The following list shows other general descriptions of strangers and the Japanese terms you can use to address them. So, obasan, which is a middle-aged woman, literally So obasan, which is a middle-aged woman, literally like an aunt. Oji san, old man, literally grandfather. Obasan, old woman, uh li- like a grandmother. Uh then you've got boya, or obach chan. Uh obach chan, young boy. Ojo san, young girl. Oni san, young man or big brother, you know, the ones that do something. Um onne san, which is a young woman. Uh well-educated Japanese adults like to break the ice. Uh use the ice-breaking idiom otaku, literally your household, but it has a limitation. You can't simply say otaku as you'd say hey you uh to get someone's attention. You can only use otaku in a sentence as in otaku wa dochira karedeska, uh which is where are you from? Otaku wa dochira karedeska. Uh just note that youngsters have been using otaku as a negative label for someone obsessed with comic books and the like, so use the term carefully. So otaku wa dochira karedeska means where are you from, but if you say otaku to someone, I even I would think you're saying I'm into anime, manga, and other Japanese things. Uh and you wouldn't be too wrong from that. Obviously, I wouldn't be wearing a Sword Art Online shirt if I didn't get that, but moving on, I digress. Uh greeting all day long. In Japanese, as in every other language, what you say and do to greet people depends on the time of day and the person you're greeting. In the morning, as you greet family and friends, say ohayou, um the informal version of good morning. As you greet your boss or teacher or even your colleagues, use the formal ohayou gozaimasu. But don't forget to bow as you say it. Check out the nearby sidebar bowing for more on this custom. In the afternoon, say konnichiwa, good afternoon to everyone regardless of their position and status. Uh good afternoon is konnichiwa. When you see the stars or the moon in the sky, say konbanwa, konbanwa, regardless of whom you greet, it means good evening. So you can get away with konnichiwa and konbanwa, but um make sure if you're going to say good morning to someone you're saying if it's not your family or your friends, say ohayou gozaimasu. Uh it's the formal way of saying things. If you haven't seen someone in a while, ask him or her, ogenki desuka. Uh is are you well or how are you? Ogenki desuka as well. When others ask you ogenki desuka, you can say hai genki desu, um which is I'm fine. But if you want to sound a bit more sophisticated, say hai okage sama. Hai okage sama. Hai okage sama de, yes, I'm fine, thanks um to you and thanks to you and God. Or nan toka, I'm barely managing things in my life, or I'm barely co- barely coping. Those two expressions sound very modest and mature to Japanese, even though the last one sounds pretty negative to American ears. English speakers make a habit of asking everyone, how are you? We do, it's true, um we ask how you are, um you doing alright? Um how have you been? Are you having a good day? Do you have much planned? There's there's quite a lot of staple conversations. Uh even if this was the person the day before, ogenki desuka is a serious question about a person's mental and physical health. So don't use it when greeting someone you saw yesterday, say it when you mean it. Ogenki desuka. Saying goodbye. When you leave a friend, say ja mata, see you again, ja mata. Uh you can also say sayonara, goodbye, if you're parting for a longer period of time, but don't use this option if you'll see the person later the same day. Otherwise, you can have either a phrase or both of them together. When you interact with your boss or teacher, say ja mata and shitsurei shimasu, which means um or shitsurei shimasu literally means I'll be rude. How do you get goodbye out or I'll be rude? It's as if you're saying I'm being rude by leaving your presence. Shitsurei shimasu, which is a excuse me, I need to go kind of thing, I suppose, by the sounds of that. Don't say sayonara or shitsurei shimasu to your family members when you leave home or for school or work. Instead, say itake- itake masu, itake masu. Itakimasu, there you go, which means I'll go and I'll come back. Itakimasu, a set phrase for this occasion. Your family will respond with you, to you with hiterasai, literally you can come back, you can go and come back. Just in case, when you get home, say tadaima, which means literally just now. Tadaima, what a phrase, which actually means I'm home. Then you, then your family will respond with okairi, which means you got home. If you have trouble memorizing these four phrases, try to think about their literal meanings and instead focus on which phrase applies when leaving home and which phrase applies when returning. Talking the talk. So Jessica runs into a professor in the morning while rushing to another class. Jessica, sensei, ohayou gozaimasu. And then the professor says, ah, Jessica, Jessica san, ohayou. Jessica, ja mata karesu desu. Uh ja mata karesu, kuresu, karesu de, shitsurei shimasu. Ja mata karesu de, shitsurei, shitsurei shimasu. I'll see you again in class. Professor, hai, ja mata. Making introductions. Nothing is more exciting than getting to know new people at a party. Uh kaigi, atarashi shoku ba, which is a new job, or even on the tore, which is a street. Tomorrow, you may meet someone who will be very important in your life. The next section shows you how to make a good first impression. Yes, the first thirty seconds may decide the rest of your life. That's deep. Uh cool, so here's my card. Business people frequently exchange cards when meeting fellow business people. But in Japan, a good deal of etiquette goes along with this exchange. First, you must exchange cards with just one person at a time. Make sure to give and receive with both hands and present the card so that the lettering faces the receiver. Also, don't put the card you receive in your wallet right away. You should treat other people's business cards like their faces and handle them in the most respectful manner. That's good. I mean, that's good mannerisms, good, good mannerisms. Introducing yourself. The first word to say um as you introduce yourself to someone is hajimashite. Hajimashite. Uh this word literally means beginning and it clearly, it clarifies the fact that you're meeting the this that person for the first time. After saying hajimashite, uh say your name and then say yoroshiku, which means um please be nice to me. Yoroshiku is a set phrase that you show a modest attitude and asks the other person to be nice to you or friendly. No intro- English reduct- uh translation exists specifically for it, but that is the gist. English speakers just say pleased to meet you or I'm very happy to meet you um when they meet someone. We don't, but you, you can kind of understand it. We're not, well, I'm not always a bad person. I'm quite easy to talk to when I have to. Uh when speaking Japanese, do as the Japanese do and say um yoroshiku. The response to yoroshiku is usually kuchira koso, koso. Uh kuchira koso, uh yoroshiku, meaning it is I who should say that. Kuchira koso, koso. Yoroshiku, meaning it's I who say that. So if you beg someone to be friendly, they beg you right back after all that begging your friends. Uh the complete formal version of yoroshiku, which is yoroshiku onigai itashi masu. Yoroshiku onigai itashi masu um is frequently used in any context uh where formality is due. So in a business context, you can expect to hear yoroshiku onigai itimasu, ita- itashi masu at the end of every conversation. Yoroshiku onigai itsi- itashi masu. Phew, it is very, very hot. Ah, I'm boiling. Now we can. Introducing your friends. Your friends can become another friend's friend if you introduce them to each other. When you want to introduce your friend to someone, say kuchiri wa, for as for this person, your friend's name and the verb desu. For example, if you want to say this is John, say kuchiri wa jon desu san, jon san desu. Kuchiri wa, kuchira wa jon san desu. The short suffix san after the name John is respectful title, um which is what we covered earlier. Bowing. Bowing plays a very important role in Japanese communication. Bow is almost always accom- accompany phrases expressing gratitude, apology, and greeting. Japanese also bow when meeting someone for the very first time. Occasionally, they shake hands, but most of the time, they just bow and say yoroshiku. Don't, you don't need to bow very deeply in this context. Just slightly tilt your head and upper back slightly forward and hold the position for two seconds. The deep, long bow is only needed when you make a horrible mistake, receive overwhelming kindness, or associate with people to whom you have to show a great deal of respect. Westerners aren't expected to be to bow to be polite, but if they do, they'll certainly receive appreciation from Japanese. Just make sure not to put your hands in your pockets behind your back or in a fist when bowing. Keep them relaxed and calm. As long as I'm talking about introductions, here's one more tip. Always introduce the person with the lowest social status to the person with the higher so- social status. So, asking people their names. Usually, the more people you know, the happier you are. So start asking people their names and make friends. As in English, telling someone your name when speaking Japanese is more or less a cue for that person to tell you his or her name. If it doesn't turn out that way, you can just ask by saying shitsurei desuka, desu desuka, or namae wa. Um I may be rude, but what's your name? Shitsurei desuka. Uh o namae, namae wa, namae. Uh your own nom- your own nom- your own name is namae, but someone else's name is o namae. As I can, as I explain in the following section. Being polite with o. The polite prefix o is used optionally to show respect to others and their things. Is often translated in English as honorable, which is why a lot of Japanese characters in grade B movies always say honorable this and honorable that. But honorable is a mouth, mouthful compared to o, which attaches to words much more naturally. Sometimes, using o is obligatory regardless of whether you're talking about yourself or about others. For example, the word money is kane, but people almost always call it o kane. Even if they're talking about their own money, only bank robbers and drunks say kane. Likewise, tea and souvenir should be ocha and omiyage. Uh respectfully, no matter what. Some differences with this concept exist depending on the geographic area of Japan you're in, but I won't go into that. But I won't go into those here. You're sparing us, you're giving us mercy. Finding out about your new friend. After an introduction, chat a little so that you and your new acquaintance get to know each other better. You can talk about where you're from and perhaps make a connection on that basis. A small conversation can mark the beginning of a friendship. The following sections show you that to how to ask where one is from and how to comment on someone's language skills. Two topics you can most likely talk about with your new friend. I do actually say that sometimes as well. How does oneself cope with this situation? You know, sometimes it's just a little bit more suave. Asking people where they're from. When you meet someone, a natural question is where are you from? Pose this question by saying tochira karedeska, tochira karedeska. Uh tochira is the polite form of toko, which is where. The particle kara means from. Uh to answer the question tochira karedeska, you just replace tochira with a place name and drop the question particle ka as Ken and Susan do in the nearby talk and dialogue, which we'll do in a second. Uh don't you re- don't you realize that the world is small when you find out the person you just met is from the same city or graduated from the same high school? In such contexts, you need to know how to say me too, to say to or also use the particle mo. For example, watashi mo tokyo karedesa, uh which is I'm from Tokyo too. Uh and as interesting fact, the wrestler page, I went to the same high school this year and she was in the same year as me. I wasn't particularly good friends with her, didn't really know her very much, but um yeah, small, small tidbit if you know, if you know wrestling. Uh so, this is a little conversation between Ken and Susan. So Ken, Susan san, Susan san, wat- wat- tochira karedeska? Susan, where are you from? Susan, watashi wa san francisco karedesi, San Francisco. Ken, hon ton, uh hon toni, really? Hon toni? Susan, iye, ii, Yamada san wa? Yes, how about you, Mister Yamada? Ken, boku mo san francisco karedesi, I'm also from San Francisco. Ah, so desuka, oh, really? In the preceding talk in the talk, Ken uses boku when referring to himself instead of saying watashi. Men and boys often substitute boku for watashi, which is neither very formal nor very informal. Um Ken also says Susan twice, which may sound strange to you. The first Susan is to get Susan's attention, and the second Susan san is used to mean you. Um yeah, very self-explanatory, of course. Uh talking about your language skills. Whenever you speak nihongo, which is Japanese, to nihonjin, Japanese people, they'll say nihongo go ga jouzu desu ne. Uh your Japanese is great. Nihongo ga jouzu desu ne. Because Japanese is a society where being bilingual is considered very special and admirable, Japanese are always impressed if you can speak Japanese. They appreciate your effort to study and use their language. Please appreciate the fact that I'm learning and studying the language. Uh as a reply to a compliment on your Japanese skills, you can say domo, which means thank you. Or you can choose one of the following modest phrases, it's up to you. Ie heta, heta desu. No, I'm bad. Ie heta, no, I'm bad, desi. Ie mada mada desi, not yet, not yet. Ie zen zen, no, not at all. If you reply modestly using one of these expressions, the Japanese person will be further impressed by your ability and praise your Japanese again. Don't feel you need to keep denying your compliment though forever. Uh try not to deny your compliment more than ten times. If you don't, your concern, your conversation partner will be exhausted. After a few times of denying, you can just smile and stop denying, just accept a compliment sometimes, it's okay. Even Japanese people who possess a very high degree of English proficiency often still say such modest phrases when they're complimented. So we've another talk in the talk between David and a waitress. So, the waitress, nihongo ga jouzu desu ne. Uh your Japanese is excellent. David, iye mada mada desi. No, not yet, not yet. Waitress, nihonjin mitai? You're like a Japanese person, nihonjin mitai? Is that so, so desuka? When describing someone or something by saying what he, she, or it is like, use mitai, just like, as in the following examples. Mike san wa nihonjin mitai desu. Uh Mike is just like a Japanese person. Mike san wa nihonjin mitai desu. Uh haha wa atoku mitai desu, my mom is like a man. Nani? Haha wa atoku mitai desu. Konon manju wa hana mitai desu. This steamed bun looks like a flower. Konon manju wa hana mitai desu. Watashi no karashi wa superman mitai desu. My boyfriend is like Superman, I am superman. Okay. Expressing gratitude and regret. Phrases of gratitude uh and apology are the most important and essential phrases in any language. Suppose a stranger holds a door open for you and when you're entering a building, what do you say? Suppose you accidentally stepping on someone's foot, how do you say I'm sorry? The next sections answer these questions. Showing gratitude. You may know the word arigato, which is thanks, but it's only one way to express gratitude. In fact, you can use arigato with one family, friends, coworkers, and subordinates, uh plus strangers who look easygoing and younger than you. For everyone else, or when in doubt about whether arigato is appropriate, say one of the following instead of, instead to mean thank you. Arigato gozaimasu. Uh domo, arigato gozaimasu, um or domo. The easiest phrase of gratitude is domo, an adverb that literally means instead of The easiest phrase of gratitude is domo, an adverb that literally means instead of all very much, indeed all very much, but but can be understood as thank you. In short, uh con- con- convenient and yet polite phrase of gratitude that you can use in any context. If you want to express a greater than normal degree of gratitude, you can use one of the longer, more fully spelled out phrases like arigatou gozaimasu or domo arigatou gozaimasu. Uh apologizing. To apologize for something you've done or for causing someone pain or inconvenience, say domo sumimasen. Uh I'm very, very sorry, or just sumimasen. Domo is an interesting adverb. Its function is to make you sound serious, and you can use it with either arigatou gozaimasu or sumimasen. If you just say domo by itself, it's interpreted as thank you, but not as sorry, so watch out. In an informal context, gomen nasai, sorry, is just fine for apologizing. Just remember that sumimasen can also be used for getting someone's attention. Sumimasen both means I'm sorry and excuse me, but the context and your facial expression help clarify which one you mean. Japanese even say sumimasen in contexts where English speakers would say thank you, as if to say excuse me for making you feel that you had to go through all that trouble. Speaking about uh the verb hanasu. Uh how do you feel about starting to speak Japanese? To answer this question, you need to know how to speak in Japanese. Use the verb hanasu to mean to speak, because hanasu doesn't end in iru or eru. It's surely an u verb. I covered the verbs in chapter three, which is where we were before. So, hanasu, hanasu, hanasanai, hanashi, hanashite. Nihongo o hanashimasuka. Do you speak Japanese? Nihongo o shen- hanashimasuka. Nihongo o hanashimasuka. Ano hito to wa hanash- hanashimasen. Ano hito to wa shi- to wa hanama- hanashimasen. Ano hito to wa hanashimasen. I don't speak with that person. Hito no mai da na- da hanasu no ga hitadasu. I'm not good at speaking in front of people. Hito no mai da hanasu na ga hitadasu. Phew, it is a mouthful. And that is chapter four done. How about that? We crushed that in fifty minutes, and we actually had a little bit of chapter three in there too. Well, this has been a great deal of fun. We're now officially on chapter five. We are absolutely crushing this. I hope everyone is enjoying this as much as I am. Uh I really do enjoy studying and I've had a lot of things going on in my personal life. Things like a tattoo, getting my driver's license sorted for my motorbike, which has been done. I just need to buy a motorbike now. Um I will try to keep these as consistent as possible. I try to keep them every couple of days. Uh I really do hope everyone enjoys. Um I've got more terrible puns. I've got an English accent. Um I've got a support animal that's wearing slippers on my bed over there. Um I've also got a panda cup and ramen aid, so definitely come and join me and leave comments, likes, subscribes. Um hit the bell icon, you know, I'm gonna be finishing this book and then we'll try to move on to something a little bit more fun, you know? I am parched. Uh and if he has any questions, I'm far away. I'm an open book. Um yeah, thank you for watching. Um yeah, if you wanna leave this on uh as you go to sleep to listen to my voice speak in the Japanese language, uh by all means, please do. Um enjoy your sweet dreams. Um don't have any nightmares. Nightmares, I'm bad. Um I'll punch him for you, you know, plenty of years of experience in fighting, that's what I love to do, so I'll send those nightmares for you. You just, you just tell me where. You just tell me where. Anyway, uh thank you for watching. Um good night, good morning. Ohayou gozaimasu, konichiwa, konbanwa. Oh, oh yes, sumi. Boom. Uh thank you for watching. Bye-bye.